First and foremost, peace, peace. Saying, uh, I was just shouting out stereo for calling me.
Peace.
Peace, peace.
I hope I'm coming through.
Yeah, I hear you now.
All right, Islam. What's good?
What up?
Happy Holy Day.
Happy Holy Day, Happy Venus Day. What's today? Uh, day two of the, um, what's, what's the? Salvation Week.
Yeah, I'm a little, um, admittedly, a little bit unclear on it too. Cause it's, if you read the, um, the, uh, newspaper article where they announced, um, Moorish National Tag Day, it says day. But it goes from the seventeenth to the twenty seventh, oh, the twenty ninth. So, hey, I'm just, I'll, hey, he said day, so I'mma call it day, you know?
Facts. The day that, the day that we celebrate for the whole week strong, whatever, you know what I'm saying? I like, once, um, I was listening to, uh, the, the, the mother Rosmaria. Or was it, who, who was it that asked this question? How many days was it in a year? And everybody was stumped. And it was like, seven days in a year. It's like, yo, she blew my mind with that. Like, there's only seven days in a year. I think it was Rosmaria in the lecture. But, um, yeah, peace, brozine. Uh, um, yeah, I just wanted to get something, you know, get something on the board. I haven't been on stereo in a minute. I've been on, um, I've been on Clubhouse a bit. There's another app called Wisdom that I use even less than stereo. But, um, this full moon, man. This full moon, I was like.
Oh, that happened today, huh? Okay. Dang, a full moon on, on Friday. And in, uh, Pisces, where Venus is exalted. All right.
It's, um, it's, it's in Virgo and Libra. But like during Pisces.
Yeah, 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 that's it. Yeah.
And like with, what I've been reading or not reading, but just like, you know, coming across with the, uh, just with information, how it comes through, you know, videos, reading memes, whatever tweet. They, they saying that it's powerful because of all of the planets that's in Pisces. Like, like you just said, you said, the moon is exalted in Pisces?
Yes. No, no, Venus is exalted in Pisces.
Venus is exalted in Pisces.
Yeah.
So Venus is in Pisces. Let me check this to go, cause I think like Uranus, Uranus is in Pisces. Let's see, current chart. And we got Sun, Mercury, Jupiter, Neptune. Venus, Mars, and Saturn. And the mid heaven all moved into Aquarius.
Mm-hmm. And Jupiter, wow, Sun and Jupiter are in Pisces. All right. Um, I mean, that's Jupiter's, Jupiter rules Pisces. That's just the thing, you know? Um, I think it's dignified there. Not just at home, it's dignified. Not exalted, not quite exalted, but it's, it's very happy there. Um, and then Saturn is in his home sign. That's great. Uh, Neptune in his home sign, that's great. Like a lot of good stuff going on.
Right. And they've really been like that. Like, I've been telling people probably for the last like two weeks, like three, three, three. I got up and I got on the app Wisdom. And I was just like, yo, like, I don't know, it feels like Christmas. Today feels like when I was a baby and I knew that I had some presents under the tree and you know, just that, that whole energy. I was like, yo, it, it feels like Christmas. I don't know what the deal is like. And, you know, I was just really going in on the three, six, nine uh, as pertaining to the dimensions and just like how uh, how I've witnessed or how I've experienced uh, creation, like manifesting my reality, like people. I, I wanna, I wanna find like, it's like, they be like, say what you gotta say, the way you gonna say it and stop caring about what people think, you know? Don't, don't trip off what nobody think about what you say. Just be you and say what you gotta say. But I don't like using like catchphrases, like everything got turned into a catchphrase or something because they wanna sell something like. So, you know, manifest your reality sounds so generic now, but like, you know, going like, think about like somebody like Nikola Tesla that said, you know, when you understand the three, six, and the nine, you'll, you'll have this knowledge of the universe. Like you'll know the universe and all these different things. And it's just like going with, you know, with more studies, like reading the circle seven. You know, chapter one. It's like a all, all is all, like, you know, like, like when I read there, there never was a time, where is it? Let me, let me, let me, let me get the. Cause it's like some of the most like epic thoughts, like to say like in the very first time never was when man was not. If life of a man, if life of man at any time began, a time would come when it went in. So it's like, time never was when man was not. And like, it's because we exist that time exists. But like, that's just talking about man from a three D perspective. That's not like talking about men, once they come into alignment with their higher selves. When, when time is kinda like overstayed, understood, and understood, like where like time is like, oh, you know, I, the way I, the way I said it was, I was, I was talking about how I basically do what I want, when I want. There's no day or time. Well, the days kinda because, you know, of like cosmic, you know, energy or cosmic alignments, the chart. You know, certain days, just better days do stuff. Certain days aren't, aren't great days to do certain stuff. For each individual, based on, you know, their, their perspective and their position, you know, with the chart. And, but I'm like, when it comes down to like society, like, oh, you gotta eat breakfast at this time. You gotta go to work at this time. You eat lunch at this time. You take a break at this time. Like, all of that, the structured aspect, the way that they have time, I'm like, I don't, I don't operate with that. So, I'm like, time don't, it exists, you know, the sun goes up and down, but that doesn't mean that I'm not gonna, if I want pancakes at night, I'm gonna eat pancakes at midnight if I want. I'm not gonna wait until the sun come up to make bacon. You know, I mean, I don't eat bacon, but like, you know what I'm saying? Like, if, if orange juice, you know, like cereal, I want a bowl of cereal, I'mma eat a bowl of cereal in the middle of the night. You know, sleep for eight hours during the middle of the day, you lazy. But if I'm up for the other, you know, sixteen hours, eighteen, you know, up for the rest of the hours of the day, then it's like, what is laziness? Like, like, I'm working when y'all sleep. You know, or like, yo, just these, these different concepts of like time, date, the calendar, and I'm just like, no, like, I can't, I can't deal with that. I won't, not that I can't, you know, I just won't. Like, it's just like, nah, it's not real.
It's not, it's not, um, in our nature either, just cause, um, there's a song, song I heard, I love, it's by Peter Gabriel, um, Santa Sento, where he's like singing, he, he's like, uh, uh, he's English, but he's like big into world music. And, um, so he like incorporates a lot of like indigenous stuff. And this one about, this song called Santa Sento with, with a J. He's singing like he's a, um, an, a quote unquote Native American shaman in the Wild West, right? And, um, he's singing about their so-called superstitions. And one of them was, um, it goes smash, smash the radio, um, and I can't remember what the part was, smash the camera, cannot steal away my spirit. Smash the watch, cannot tear the day to shreds. Like, oh, okay. You know, and the song is like a ritual song. You can actually listen to it and do a ritual to it. It's kinda dope. Peter Gabriel, Santa Sento.
Yeah, I just found it, so I'm, I'm playing it for sure.
Yeah. Cannot tear the day to shreds, right?
That's so real. That is so real.
Cause I mean, we didn't have, it's like so much stuff we didn't have, and I see why people are trying to come over here. Um, cause the whole Libra thing, there must be balance, right? So for us, much oppression was in the so-called old world, which we know we're the old world, they flipped everything. Um, that, for as much oppression as they had going on, that's how much freedom was over here, right? So, um, cause they did, you, they did call us lazy, the colonists. Because they were like, all these native, all these Indians do all day is sit around, the men just hunting fish, the women just weave and sew. And all they do is, is make babies at night. And they had a problem with that. They're irresponsible. Um, no, we're, we're part of nature. Have you noticed how the other creatures, you know, or what we call them, people? The bear people, the wolf people, you know? Have you noticed how they live? They ain't sweating it. They're not paying to live here, which is why we didn't, they couldn't even trade, they had to trade. We didn't have no money. Money for what?
For what?
You know, everything provided. What I need money for? So they had to set up the trading post, get control of all our stuff, and then get us onto their monetary system, so they could bring their oppression over here. And let's add the clocks and all that stuff to it. You know?
All right. Structure.
Structure. Funny, cause we, we're ruled by Saturn. And we don't do it, you know? Like, y'all the ones being all the positive and whatnot. Trying to make everybody fit your, fit into your box. And boxes are unnatural, you know?
Right, right. So, uh, but that, that really been the vibe that I've been on. So I've been saying childlike and, and, you know, now that we saying that, it's, it's really, it's really just like getting closer and closer and closer to nature, like with, without, you know, uh, because like, the, 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 the connotation, you know, would be like, oh, like, like you said, like, people was like lazy or just unproductive, but like you know, with, with, with their perspective of like the closer you are to nature, the more animal like you are, or the more, uh, what, what they used to call it in art, they call it, uh, I can't remember the word they use for it in art, but it's basically like.
Like primal?
Yeah, like pr- primitive, primal. You know, primitive, like getting back to like.
The first, it's right there in the words, prime. I'm okay with that.
Right.
It's the best to sound like to me.
Right, primal, right. Especially like.
Try to make that sound like nothing negative, like of course y'all do.
You know, we, we're at the top of the whole like you know, quote unquote, animal kingdom, you know what I'm saying? Like nature, like we, you know, I be watching all these videos, like, like fish, they be having some wild fish in the ocean, like stuff that is like wild, like through evolution, you got really, really creative in order to survive, in order to eat, in order to protect your family and all these different things. Fish, they be off the hook. And then like land and air, animals and mammals and all of that, like, you could see like over time, like the different things that they picked up to be here now, today, you know, minus the hunting and all of that. But like, to know that we have brains that like, you know, they emulating computers off of our brains. And it's like, that's, that's what makes us so prime, so exceptional, you know what I'm saying? Like, we could outsmart just about everything on the planet. Like getting creative, but being in that, in that natural, in that natural state, you know, primal, you know? And it's just like, that's dope. Like, like I, I love that. Like, that's, that's where I'm at with it, like. So I've been, I've been reading a lot about like uh, shamanism. They call it shamanism, you know? Listening to the, to the animals and observing the animals and the weather and the wind and all this different, all the different aspects of nature that is around us, you know? And just like really like having a, uh, having a moment with that. Having a moment because like I was telling Brother Sheldon, we was building one day, I said, man, these Cardinals, they be here. Faithful, like every day, getting me up, six o'clock, like they here.
Yeah, I remember that. You tell them, I do, considering moving and they like lined up and were singing to you. Like, I believe it.
The squirrels, like, nature is just there, like, I think it's a little bit different for me too, because this has been my first official year, living in an actual house, opposed to being in an apartment building and having to, you know, do a whole bunch of stuff to get downstairs and outside, you know? And then all I see is a city, like cars and people, you know what I mean? Like, the last place I lived had a lot of birds. There was a lot of bird watchers that came there. But, um, you know, they have to go into a park and then, you know, it's like, oh, it's too much, like a whole thing, but like to just rise in the AM and, and, and the rising and, you know, the sun is just there, bum, like, straight to the east. Blasting through my window. And then I'm hearing the birds, all the birds, like. And then when I look outside, it's just, they just, everything is just there, nature, squirrels, bum, birds, boom. Plants, grass, trees, like everything is just like there, like, and I think, you know, I'm just getting, uh, getting more into it, you know? The vibe. So I was like, you know, I did the, uh, I was talking about like that, you know, on, on March third. Just the different aspects of the alignments, different things that been happening. Just like thinking about stuff and it happens, talking about stuff and it happens. People contacting me when I think about them, that, that been a thing, but like, it's, it's deep now, like, like I, I really feel like, like, that there's the energy, we was, we was building back in January about the codons. You know, January twenty second, the rave new year, and, you know, just how energetic it was then. And I'm like, February is a short, a shorter month technically, and you know, to go from the codons at the end of January, fly through February, and we only, you know, through March right now, I'm like, yo, like, that's not a long time. That's just a few days for real. And I'm like, yo, like, it's just more, more of the, uh, neutrino dust settling, I suppose. So I've been.
Something going on with this stuff coming through, cause, um, I don't know if you've been seeing people, I don't support this at all. People have been, uh, they post their children on, uh, Instagram, right? And, and I can't help but notice the newborns, cause every, all these mothers, and they're young, right? And they've never been mothers before, so they really, when they notice this, it's like, wow, that actually stuck out to you, even though you've never been a mother before. But they're showing their babies like minutes after birth, holding their heads up, just looking around, right? Our babies do that, they really do, but it takes a couple of hours. And now you turn out minutes? It's gone down to minutes? Okay, something going on. And then it's, it's not just our children, right? It's like, I see European children, Asian children, they're all doing this. Like, they're rolling over at a couple of weeks old. Like, what? Cause you think you can just leave them on the bed? Not no more. And I'm just like, wow, so, and, and it's the fact that the mothers, these are first time mothers. And you knew something was not normal with that. You know, and I'm not gonna say it's because you've been around children, just because of how digital our generations have been lately, right? I'm wondering if that's just the, your, your, the nature within you, because speaking as somebody who's, you know, produced four people, um, that process, it like brings you so, like, it makes you primal, it really does, right? Your, uh, vision is heightened, um, your sense of hearing is heightened, your sense of smell is just unreal, right? And you get dumber. It's called pregnancy brain, where your brain actually shrinks during pregnancy, but it makes you like, um, more instinctive, instinctual, if that makes sense. You're not as smart, so you're, you're, you can, uh, operate in nature a lot better, right? And the whole nesting thing. So I'm just like, yeah, I wonder if that stuck out to y'all because of how open you are right now to being natural, right?
Wow.
If they, if they breastfeed, it just keeps going. I don't think it, I don't think it ever stops, really. I don't know, cause, I don't know. Cause I mean, I had, like, I mean, they weren't close together, not at all. But it's just like, I wonder if that's why, um, I live in an apartment, but I can't do cities, you know? I would love to go off of it, but, uh, whatever, I know, I'm, uh, I like my technology too much, I ain't gonna lie, you know? If I could figure out a way around that, it'd be on. But yeah, something going on. How the, how the scriptures talking about, oh, you know, in the end time, woe to the women who are with child and gifts suck and all this stuff. And I'm like, I wonder if this is why these babies are trying to hurry up and like mature, so they can live through this, whatever's coming. Cause rolling over at two weeks old, that's like a, uh, I'll say maybe five month old thing. Maybe not, that's a little late, you know, but still. And that brings, that reminded me of Mahabharata, how we're reading on, that five and six year old children will be become, becoming parents, you know? And I'm like, what? Considering how fast they are at, at birth, oh boy, you know? And then how these, again, I don't support children being, I think it's exploitation, um, cause they don't know no better, right? And they don't know, um, the consequences of having your images out like that, and they don't have no control over it. And then it's not helping that you're dressing them like little adults. So I'm like, oh, I, I can see where this can go. You know, you got these children who are, who are growing like by leaps and bounds, and you're putting them in adult situations. So yeah, stuff might happen. You know, adult situations and adult clothing. You know?
Yeah, that, the clothing thing been irking me for a long time, like, I, I was talking about that with somebody like a few years ago, walking through, uh, walking through Target, man, I was like, they tripping, dog, like, I can't, like, I was like, look, at that time, I was like, I'm so glad that I don't have no daughters, because that's weird that like, like, look at the clothes, I was like, yo, they tripping. They are really, really bugging.
It's not weird. Um, this is why you have to be, they say, oh, women should choose better. Yeah, the guys need to choose better too. Because they're dress, these women are dressing their daughters like them. Right? So I just stare at it when I go out all the time. Because I have, I don't usually wear my turban, because it's, people approach me when I have on my turban. And then, uh, so I just wrap it up like a regular Muslim woman, right? Like with a bun in the back. And I wear long sleeve dresses that come down to my ankles, year round, all right? And my daughter, she wears, um, as the best dresses I can find, cause like you said, what they have available, like on rack is, the options are not that great, right? I can, I cannot find a child dress that comes below her knee, unless I order it from like some Islamic country, right?
Right.
So I compromise, it's like, okay, here's a regular dress, but you gonna put some leggings on it. And it works out great, cause you're a child, you have on a dress. And you gonna be jumping around, so this is perfect, cause you know, your dress gonna fly up anyway. So, um, people stare at me because I don't look black. And my daughter's covered up too. It's like, well, her head isn't, cause it's like, leave her alone for now, right? But still. Um, and then I'm like, okay, I'm looking at the women around me, they have on cold shoulder shirts and skinny jeans. And their daughters do too. They look like them, it's like, that's what you get, right? Um, so this stuff is, um, it's true. Um, Kudrow's online, he's live right now going, you know, how, uh, nations are the women, you know? So whatever the women are doing, and it's not fair, but this, it just is the case. It all comes back to us, everything come back to us, right? So, um, Islam. Is it that men like, is it that men like makeup or they like what you like?
Hi.
You know?
Hi, how are you?
Hey, what's up? Hi, Oreo.
You can call me Nisi.
Hello, Nisi.
Okay. So we're talking about fashion, are we talking about fashion with girls, just little girls?
Oh, we just.
And how this, like, I guess, well, not saying discuss or distasteful, some of the clothes can be putting on your daughters. And you shouldn't portray certain things for your daughter's view as a baby.
Right.
That's the part that I can read.
Right, so like. Go ahead, my bad.
I'm currently eight months pregnant with a little boy. I have a niece, I have nephews, I have sisters. And I understand, my best friend has my niece, but my best friend never dressed my niece like her. She never put her in any type of clothing to be like, oh, you, you too, uh, huh huh, she look grown and she's like literally two months old or four months old or even three.
Right.
We didn't play nothing like that. We understood like, as like, I, I really, we Christians, we, we dress however we want to. We understood, we know better than to put our children, our daughters, in any type of clothing like that. For us as young people, we were young, seeing that growing up, and we knew ourselves, we had a conversation with ourselves and said, that's distasteful, and we wouldn't even do our kids like that. And she kept up her word, she kept up with her word, and she never put her child in anything inappropriately. Nothing with no skin showing, like she got a crop top on, booty shorts up her booty, anything like that, no. Khalil, Khalil.
There's the issue with the mothers wearing it too, cause who did the good little girls wanna grow up and be like? They wanna be like the big girls, especially their moms, for a while.
So then we understand, but we have the common understanding that there's a fashion trend, like there's a trend, there's a trend. There's something we can't stop, there's something we can't stop unless we are petitioning to put a control on the designers who make the clothes.
Well, you don't have to participate. That's, you're right, you have no control over that, just don't participate. We're Moors, right? And we see that black folks got it hard. I am not trying to have somebody. I am not trying to have somebody look at me and assume I'm one of them, right? Even though those are my people. But I don't wanna be treated like y'all, so let me make it as easy as possible for the entire world. As soon as they light eyes on me, they know I am set apart, you know, and my daughter is too. They just look at me with awe and keep it moving, right? Like, I've been caught up in crowds, where they say, all you niggas get on the floor, and I remain standing and leave, and nobody tries to stop me, because they look at me and like, well, one of these things ain't like the others. It makes a difference. I know that Al Khati says, what, don't judge a man by his clothing burnt up from the start, but he also said, look your best, right? So you coming out showing your form for the whole, me personally, cuz I grew up NOI, so I know my, my perception might be so-called skewed, right? But I'm sorry, these women out here looking like straight up hoes. You know, you're exposing yourself and then wondering why people treat you like an object, because you're objectifying yourself. Cover up and see how they, then you know exactly why they talking to you. If they can't see nothing, it must be because they, they, they talking to you for your mind, if they can't see nothing to attract their eyes, you know? Then my daughter, she begs for long dresses, I wish I could find them for her, cuz she wants to look like me. She's only five, you know?
And that's, and that's perfectly fine, because, but also like how you said, these women are older, and like how you are saying, it starts within your house, you're raising your daughter differently than other women. It's how you raise your child, it's what you choose for your children. It's not basically, oh, everybody have to do it this way, that's, that's what you would like, that's what you would like.
Oh, no, 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 because then I gotta be subjected at, oh, no, you do you, so I can be me.
I'm speaking in general, I'm not literally speaking, I'm not literally saying it to you, Miss, um, Miss Brini.
I understand that, I'm making sure that I'm clear, that I'm not trying to impose myself on nobody.
But in general, but in general, you know, like, people hearts, people mindset, they already have a set off to where it's like, nah, it shouldn't be like this, it should be like this. Cuz from nineteen fifty, everybody's wearing poodle skirts, nobody's wearing nothing outside of the thing to be like, oh my goodness. All these are different trends, history repeats itself, but this history and generation, we'll have been more explicit, we'll have been more open, we'll have been more comfortable with our skin. We, we understand.
Sound like y'all just floating along with the current of the trends, but you know, I'd rather be, I'd rather be rooted in my culture. I have a culture, and I'm proud of it. So I'm not following the most popular thing. I'm honoring my foremothers and forefathers, right? And they lounged, they were comfortable, they wore linens and silks and all that stuff, right? And they wore like robes, they covered up, because that's a privilege. Good luck finding a portrait of a Ma, uh, a Moorish woman. You can find tons of the men, you can find tons of their concubines, you cannot, this, um, dang near impossible to find paintings of Moorish women, because that was a privilege. And now look how we doing. We exposing ourselves every chance we get and then dragging our children into this, that's fine. Keep it over there. You're black, I'm not, and, um, be prepared to deal with the consequences, both of us, right? I don't get invited many places because people think I'm a prude. Fine, I will be that all day, all night and everything, twice on Sundays, for real. But following trends, that sounds like you don't have no control over your life because you just doing what the other people are doing. Good, go for that. And I mean, if you like, if you like riding other people's waves, that's you. I would rather celebrate what I got going on, because I don't see too many Japanese people riding trends like that. They might in the street, but when they go and see their elders and stuff, oh no, there's a certain costume you wear because you respect your elders. But making them old too. I'm not old, old, old woman, old too.
Like, what's understood, don't need to be explained, but you do, but we do understand it, there's nothing that's not, that's not learned, like, they have the understanding, the, these were, the women who do actually dress their children, they have that understanding, they got that mindset, they really do. But they still choose to do what they want to do with their lives, because maybe it affected them when they were younger, that it was like, oh my goodness, I could never do this, so then when they get their opportu- opportunity to be free amongst themselves and have their own life, and they got their own kids, I'm gonna do me, I'm gonna be me. That's just like, look, boom, I got you. The Duggars, the Dugga Girls, the Dugga Girls aren't even wearing skirts anymore, they're wearing pants and shorts and tennis shoes, they are showing their legs. They're wearing bikinis, literally, there's pictures. And the Dugga Girls was, everybody was based off of, you wear a T-shirt and you wear a skirt, and you better have leggings on up under that skirt. Nothing better not show, they had their own little set, 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 set his tone, the boys set his tone.
I bet twenty dollars, give it twenty years, and let's, let's revisit that and let's see how they dress, cuz that happened to me. Being forced to, being forced to dress a certain way. And then when I got old enough to do me, I'mma do me. And it didn't, it did not go so well, right? Not saying I had bad experience, I had bad, uh, attention. It was attention I did not want. That's what made me go back to doing this. It's like, oh, you gonna learn, you gonna find out why that was put in place, and if the women didn't want it that way, it would have been gone a long time ago, alright? So that's why I said, that's fine, that's cuz they're young, and they need to find out why that was put in place and why it was able to last. It's like arranged marriages, right? If women did not really want to do that, it would not happen, why do they still exist? Right? And it comes back to, you can do you, that's fine. It's really selfish, it's extremely selfish, because it always, it comes, we are the nation, right? And I'm wondering if that's why black people don't get why they need to have more respect for themselves, especially the women. Um, when you have a nation, um, it's so hard to explain this to some folks. It's like, represent your family, which is, as messed up as our families are, I can't even use that as an example. But are you gonna go out, it's like wearing a sign, I represent this house, household, and you acting a total fool, right? I don't care what other people think about me, that's fine, because, um, when they show up at your door, they're going to assume, they can, excuse me, they're going to assume they can do certain things based on certain behaviors. It is not fair, it is human nature, right? I'm not that young, and I used to think like, you know, I'mma do me, you do you, and we gonna both get, you know, that's in the constitution, life, liberty, pursuit of hap- happiness, as long as you ain't infringing on that for anybody else, right? But, uh, me personally, I'm speaking just for me, um, spending half of my life as a so-called black person, and it never made sense to me, and now half of my life as a Moor, right? The, the pride I get to have, because I represent something that's based in history, right? I can actually find what my ancestors did to contribute to this whole thing that we have going on, like the Americas, right? I can, I'm, I don't think, I don't think that that's a, uh, a good tribute to my legacy, to walk around with my butt hanging out, to walk around with my boobs all in everybody's face, because that's not what my people did. And as soon as we started doing that, that's when we failed, right? When we start, when everybody had access to who, our women, they can see her booty whenever they want. What other race, what other national people supports their women doing that? Can you imagine? Um, a Chinese per, okay, let me, let me correct that, besides black people and so-called white people, just them. Can you imagine, um, an Hindustani girl? Right? Acting like Megan Thee Stallion, could she ever go home again? No. Could a Chinese, even though she making millions, she could never, Mia Khalifa, perfect example, why was she so popular? Because nobody had ever seen a Palestinian woman exposing herself like that. That's why she blew up, she was just another chick with big boobs, so what? What set her apart? Her people don't act like that. It was, it was, it was freaky because it had never been seen, never been done, hasn't been done since. And if those women, they have porn- pornography over, uh, in Pakistan or wherever she's from. But have you ever seen it? Everything's blurred out, the eyes, everything. Because they know those women, if their faces are seen on TV, they need to leave the country. Mia Khalifa can never go home, because her people are like, you are misrepresenting us. And people gonna come over here thinking that they can access our daughters the way that you let them access you. Because people unfortunately are stupid, and they generalize, right? Oh, well, you know, black women are easy, because look how they portray themselves. That's fine, I'm not black, and that's why, because I don't like how they portray themselves. They, it's like they have no respect for themselves. And I understand, I'mma do me, fine. You represent you, and then when you get in trouble, who gonna come for you? Right? I represent my nation. And when I did get in trouble because of how I carried myself, my nation showed up. I got myself out the trouble, but my nation showed up, because I was not thinking on the individual level. Right? I think on the collective level, because I noticed, I, I noticed how countries who are on, who work on a collective level, right? Um, they flourish, right? It ain't about the individual. You, you wanna go ahead and be your individual self by yourself, and then when you get in trouble, that's who you got.
That's facts.
Cuz I mean, these Moors are getting out of control now, I mean, here comes somebody else using TNA to sell Moorish stuff, and it's like, oh, come on. What, how is that, you're just exchanging black for more, y'all still look black, you shaking your butt in the camera. That's not what Moors do, I've never seen a Moorish rump shaker, ever, right? I don't remember, I'm, I'm, I have a degree in history, right? I know how to do research. I can't, the few pictures I find of our women, they are covered head to heel, alright? In finery, like dripping with stuff.
That's what's, that's what's really wild about it, it's like, for everybody that like, talks about style and fashion and all these things, it's like, bro, like, do you see what they wearing though, like? If, in, 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 in modern times, do you know how much these gobs cost, like? This, this is work, like talking embroidery on silks and like wild stuff.
Come from a land with a mountain of gold. Embroidery on silk, I got pillows wrapped around my waist, and it's made for my waist, so you know, when I sit up, I don't actually have to hold my body up, that kind of stuff. Man, lounging, the women were always lounging, because the men kept them in splendor and hidden away, because that was a privilege, right? You shouldn't be, you're a treasure. In Islam, they tell us women are the gateways to paradise. Right? Uh, because, you know, whatever you give us, we, we turning it to something else, give us food, we make dinner, give us a house, we make it a home. Give us your, um, love, we give you, give you our encouragement. You give us your seed, we give you children, right? And that's precious. I wish women would see themselves that, think about how guys treat girls when they first discover girls, right? They damn near worship them, right? And then we teach them to disrespect us by lowering ourselves, exposing our, she's easy. Somebody said that to me in, in passing, and I'm like, oh, we're done. Not that I'm, uh, he said I was easy because, uh, I don't complain. I'm like, I'm, I'm not, I don't, I let you know there's an issue before I have to complain about something. That's what he meant by easy, and I had to correct him, like, no, I'm, I want to be uncomfortable, because that'll keep you respectable, that'll keep us both respectable, right? So no, I'm not an easy woman, I'm an uncomfortable woman. Right? Cause I mean, I'm, I'm convinced that once our women get straight, it's over, but, but it's over, this whole stuff ends. Because we'll teach our children to not accept certain things, right? And to have more pride with themselves, where people will be like, um, I've been called intimidating, that's like the best, the best compliment I've ever had, and it's, it's crazy who calls me intimidating. I said, I ain't gonna call him out, but, uh, his, his name starts with a K. Of all people to think I'm intimidating, I'll take it as a compliment, because I guess I'll put out that energy, it's just certain things ain't gonna happen, right? For real. I can count on my hands the number of people that know what my hair looks like, you know? One hand.
That's, that's, that's government, you know? As long as it's not always but gratitude and respect, you know what I mean? Honor. It's like, that's, I, I feel, you know, for me personally, I think like one of the first times we built, like, that was, that was, that was the whole thing for me, like, yo, like, Empress Brini ain't playing no games out here, like, that's, that's what we need, we need that, like, that real government, that real law giver, you know what I'm saying, like? Like, I, I was listening to, um, Nobu Dali Day, and I, I listened to Roz Mariah at the beginning, and I was just like, yo, like, like, we need that, you know? Seeing the condition of a lot of the men, you know, and, and, and it's been interesting to see how they, um, it's starting to come out, you know, like, wow, bro, like, your relationship with women must be terrible and, you know, how to look at like, and, and it's wild, because like, you know, self hate is a real, like, real thing, you know, with us. And it's like, dang, yo, like, like, you, you can't, I ain't say you can't, you know what I'm saying, cuz I got into fights with my homies, like, plenty of people that I considered to even be my homies or friends. Like, nah, bro, you can't talk like that about your moms, bro, or nah, you can't, you can't act like that about your moms, bro, like, you can't, I, I can't respect that, like, that's what I can't respect. And when I, I won't even tolerate it, like, I, I stick up for people moms more than they be sticking up for their moms, like, I love everybody mom, like, I've been like that for, you know, since I was a teenager, like, you know, it's, always been like that.
Especially since I became a mom, I got a whole new respect for them.
Right.
For real. Cuz I used to try to go along, get along, and that, that stuff gets you set back further and further and further. But when I, once I started saying like, okay, I'm seeing some stuff, I'm not saying it is what it is, I'm making some observations, and, you know, take it or leave it. And, you know, let's go into the astrology, I got a Mercury in Taurus in the seventh house. So, um, my words, and, uh, what is that, uh, Lilith in Gemini in the eighth house. So my words can be kind of blunt, right? Cuz who got time to be, enough, I used to, people used to call me a bush beater, like, talking around stuff, cuz levers don't wanna upset, upset people, I'ma leave rising. You know, it's like, um, that's a, a big problem with levers, they don't like rocking boats. And that's what we need to be doing, cuz that's how you find the balance, you know?
Gotta shake it up.
You got to, you got to, right? And, um, so, um, and thank you for saying that, like, I keep it real, I try to, it's just like, this is what I'm honestly thinking. And I don't hear anybody else saying it, and I do see the issue getting worse, right?
Yes, yes.
But it's okay, because, um, some of the stuff I see is like, I'm glad I see it, because it shows where people's minds are and to not deal with them, for real.
Right.
You know, like, oh, you support this, I thought something else, never mind.
It's, it's so wild.
Relating his arm.
Standards, I, I don't, I don't really, um, often tap into the, um, to the mothers on their blogs, so, but one, one time that I did, more recently, it's like, it's all about who you surround yourself with, and, you know, I was just like, yo, like, that's facts, like, like, yo, like, standards, you know, like, social standards, like.
Discrimination, that's not a bad word.
Right, like, if you talk like this or act like that, I will not rock with you.
I can't. I just can't. Cuz Islam teaches, people will bring you down before you can bring them up. You better be careful who you choose to associate with.
Right.
Right? Meet them where they at, okay, you can do that, I got, I got other stuff, I did that, you know, I'll leave that for the newbies, who wanna, who wanna, kinda effort. But, you know, I don't think you should have to, you don't have to, um, force this stuff on people, they'll come to it on their own willingly.
Get this for them.
But in the meantime, if folks wondering, like, what do Moors think about this? Well, you know, we actually have a book on how our women are supposed to behave. You know, it was written by a woman with another group of women. And then, um, the prophet has signed off on it because he knew he couldn't say nothing about it. It's like, where do you get off? You really can't say nothing about it, right? And if you read his prophecies, he really doesn't tell the women too much what to do, right? Cuz, um, I kinda see us as the Klingons, right? From Star Trek. How long? They actually talked about the courtship ritual between Klingon men and women. And I thought it was funny, cuz the men are so vicious, you know, they, they're like the, the most feared ones in the whole, like, galaxy or whatever, right? And the way, uh, it was Worf who was describing it, and he was like, um, describing the courtship ritual, and they were like, yeah, um, it's a lot of screaming, a lot of scratching, and, uh, it's a lot of screaming, a lot of scratching, and uh the men read poetry while the women throw things and we just try to stay out the way and not get hit. Wait, are you telling me your women are more vicious than you? And and y'all supposed to be modeled off of us? Okay, again, let's look at the balance, right? As oppressed as women are on the other side of the ocean, that's how free we're supposed to be. I I don't wanna be in charge of people. I really don't. I'm a mother. I have four children. I don't want to be running nobody's nothing. I I really don't have any interest in in telling people what to do. But I can understand why women should be in charge, right? It's just our women, right? Cause um, based on my observation, I've done a lot of traveling, met a lot of different people. Our women are really, I don't wanna say strong, um, resilient, uh brave, confident, um capable, capable, right? These other women are weak as I don't know what, right? I'm not saying that's a bad thing. It's just that dang, if something happens to him, everybody dies because you're so weak. Our women on the other side, why are so many of our women single? Because it's 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 by design, because how many men of marriageable age are locked away? So it's not for not, and then the other ones, they're taking advantage of the situation. Not all of them, this is not all of them. Taking advantage of the situation because they know they're a rarity, right? And then um, rather than, okay, let me correct my energy to attract the a a good sister, of which there are plenty of them out here. I'm going to focus on my lower self and find some, find me a mother I can have sex with, basically, right? And then she depends, and I want somebody who depends on me for everything. And then something happens to you and then what, alright? So um, I really do think our women um are built for leadership, right? Not for rulership. That's not, that's different. Leadership, just because of um, the the rigors we've been put through, right? Because we know how to, there's a saying, we know how to squeeze a nickel till it farts, right? Um, we gonna make sure everybody eats, right? And I'm gonna do everything in my power to keep peace with our surrounding neighbors because I don't wanna send my sons off to fight nobody. That kind of thing. For real. Cause I mean, I've been thinking about that passage, the uh, the earth has been given into the hands of the wicked. I was thinking about that the other morning. Like, why is that the first thing that popped in my head? And the next thing that popped in my head was that James Brown sound song. Can you guess which one? Hey, like, why is this in my head? I just woke up, you know? I don't know. Time to give us, I mean, this whole thing with the the fall of the Moors is really proving who should be in charge, right? Not necessarily running anything because um again, referring back to uh Star Trek Next Generation, that episode with the Moors. It was obviously an episode of the Moors, right? How everything was in the hands of the women, but the men were the protectors and the maintainers. And um what else did they do? Protectors, maintainers, and organizers, right? Just because men can be a little impulsive, right? They'll gamble away the house and oops. That's that's actually where the Texas homesteading act came from. Losing their houses and getting drunk and losing everything, including the house in a poker game. So Texas actually has an act saying, nope, you gotta get your, first, if you want a homestead, you have to be married. And then if you wanna sell it, you have to get your wife's signature on it. This was in a time where women were considered their husband's property. But it was that serious. So I'm just saying. Might as well put it in the hands of the mother if you wanna keep it. But be careful which mother you pick, for real.
Man. That's facts, though. And like, I I think like, like, like men, it it's like, it's like the whole thing kinda like reversed, you know what I'm saying? Like, it's like a little bit like where like, you know, you still got like the dudes that's out there like, thinking that they picking even, you know what I'm saying? Like, I stopped believing that a while ago, like, thought I picked. But I got picked. Like, it's wild for real. Homies don't even do the choosing.
Yeah, I mean, like, Bogart show like that.
Nah, I'm glad. This is why, this is is, this is what it's all about because, you know, you know, and it's just like a pop-up joint. Like, I ain't scheduled it. It's Friday, not Monday. But like, I'm just like, so like, you know, just open to like change and just being in the moment, you know? Uh, I felt like, yo, like, I want, you know, today's the eighteenth, that makes nine. I'm like, full moon, New Year's. I'm just like, I just looked at everything like, yo, like, and then like seeing uh the the uh the Tag Day. Seeing all the Tag Day information, I'm like, this is nature, you know what I'm saying? Like, so I'm like, I'm doing a joint later on on Clubhouse called Divine Science. And like, it's it's the same, you know, really the same conversation, you know, where like, it's like uh, one time I was watching a Taj like she did, the science of the number nine. When he was talking about like, out of alignment people, like when when men are out of alignment and when women are out of alignment. And I was just like, you know, I've been so focused on like, self, you know, like self-love, we talking self, shadow acceptance, all these different things, you know? Just finding that, that balance within myself. And then I'm like, yo, like, this is, this is a, this is a natural time to to be having a conversation about nature and about balance and about, you know, creation manifesting like, because like, that's just the only way. I don't, I don't really, I don't really see anything else happening, you know, there's just, you know, what everybody seemingly got forced into. And then there's this, you know, realigning with with nature, you know, and and all the ways that was mentioned because like, you know, the woman that came up, you know, like she said, she's eight months pregnant with a boy, you know? And it's like, you know, he's gonna be a reflection of his reality, you know what I'm saying? Like, like, I'm an only child, you know what I'm saying? And you know, going through all the different uh metaphysical studies, you know, the jinkies, the human design, talking about what what our life was like eighty-eight days before we was born. What what was our mother's reality eighty-eight days before we was born, before we manifested, you know? Just everything like from thought energy to emotional energy to physical realities, music senses. Like you talking about all of the different senses, how they get heightened, like, you know, like, all of that stuff gets translated, so like, you know, it was dope that, like, I don't even know, like, I had the thing on and I seen the one and I just put her up there. But um, I don't know, this, this is gonna be on her, on her profile, so she'll be able to come back, you know, and listen to it.
I mean, I expect pushback. I remember something you said, how you asked, and um, a beer, he seconded it. How y'all can't say nothing about this. You really can't because they gonna, they gonna bite your heads off, right? Remember what I just said about the Klingons, right? Try that with me, right? I'm old enough to be your mother now. Or really cool, I, right? And I tried it your way. And I can't, I'm for real. I started out all long dresses, got to college, lost my mind, right? Running around, for real, I once wore a see-through dress to a party to to get people to come in. It worked. But um, yeah, and then I came back to long sleeve dresses again, get it? And that's when I was like, well, this is why stuff persists, because uh, men ain't trying to hear it, but women are sure gonna say something if they don't like something, right? It's just easier sometimes to just give her her way. So if a lot of stuff, women, they say, they tell us, women don't want, if they didn't want it, that nation would, that if they, it would either end or the nation would end, right? Cause the women will, hagar, the women will end your nation is not that hard. It really ain't, right? And if she has to, she'll end herself to do it. You know, so if certain things were not, if we were being forced to do it, I'm just saying, it's it's just not possible. Because then you got these girls, think about it, like arranged marriages again, these girls were forced into this. And then they gonna grow up and force their daughters into it? And a lot of these, some of these chicks are widows when they do it. I'm just saying. And um, I'm not advocating for arranged marriages. I'm just um using that as an example of um why some aspects of cultures persist, right? And if they didn't, if they if they were undesirable, they would be gone. It's that simple, right? So yeah.
I think that like, I don't know, like, I feel like, and this could just be my optimism, you know, cause I'm I'm me astrologically, and I'm just like, I think with with this technology that we have, you know, these, these conversations and, you know, cause at the same time that they live and all of that, like, and that they they do, you know, they be on, you know, on record and all of that, we could delete them too. So like, but I just, I don't know, I feel like, it's like the new, they the new books, like, everything is like a live, like audiobook, like powerful conversations. Like, people won't understand this conversation until next year, you know what I'm saying? Or like five years from now, like, you know, and and luckily now that we have this, you know, like, all, think about all the conversations that weren't recorded because we didn't have this technology. Like, so many gems got dropped because we didn't have technology. And it's like, now that we have this opportunity to, you know, we don't have to be in one place with somebody talking with the board and the camera, you know what I'm saying? Like, we could just go like, no matter where we at, we just pick up the phone, got a thought, you got an emotion, you got some knowledge, some wisdom, you could just drop one real quick, some gems out. And then, you know, the people that 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 need it and the people that want it gonna get it, you know? And then there's like notes where they could come back later. Oh, man, I was, I was in a conversation, I was in the midst of people that was talking like this, you know, ten years ago. I can't like imagine, like, I was talking to somebody the other day, they was talking how they they found they MySpace. Like, like people, MySpaces is still up. You know what I'm saying? Like, that's wild.
That's crazy. You know, they ain't been uh um accessed in decades now, right? I guess Rupert likes, give it, I spent my money on this. That's so funny. He bought, he bought that mess Rupert Murdoch and then Facebook came. That was hilarious.
I ain't even feel bad for him either because Actually made me really tight when he did that. I was putting music out on MySpace. MySpace was lit. But like, it's it's cool now that that we got this technology and like, you know, there's a lot of Moors just out here just being them, you know? Just having normal, this is a normal conversation for me, you know what I'm saying? Like, this ain't really that far out. Like, this gonna be far out for some people, like, they hear the word nation and just lose their mind, like, what? That's how I know it spells though, through the words, like, like, like the Mr. Smiths, you know? They hear Islam and they lose it. Nations lose it. Moors, they lose it. You know, just certain, it's like trigger words. The liberating words is the words that turn them the other direction. And it's like, wow.
And that's really crazy for people that are so accepting of absolutely everything else, right? You know, like, if I can't get along with my community, I know the black folks accept me. Yeah, they sure will. You gonna find you a group somewhere within our community, you know? Look at how well businesses do in our community. We're so welcoming. But nah, here go your stuff. Ah, we treat that the way we should be treating all that other stuff.
Some heavy magic. And it's wild, cause like,
Whatever it is, it's 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 effective.
That's why I've been like, I think like, that was like one of the, one of the main things for me, you know, coming into, you know, the realization like, it's words, like, wait, 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 wait. Cause I, I like that when people, you know, like, we talk ebonics. You know, where I'm from, we 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 make up whole new words, dances and all that, you know what I'm saying? So it's like, wait, wait, wait. So they they just did the same thing that we been doing though. Like, they steal everything, even the, even, you know what I'm saying? Like, I I was talking about, what, um, it was a word. It was a word. And I was like, dad, they stole that word even, like, like, re a poster, everything, like, really, like, and I'm just like, wow. Conservative. The word conservative. I was, I was posting history, his Tory, Tory, the Irish robbers. And then in like the eighteen hundreds, Tory turned into conservatives. But the word conservative means to preserve. And I'm like, they stole that though, cause they're not preserving anything natural, like, wow, like, I was just, I was just tripping off that, like, how they just steal every single thing.
Yeah, yeah, it's like um, it's just pure confusion, all of it, right? Like, I'm teaching my daughter to read right now. And to help her through the difficult parts, um, I have her, I have her say something and it calms her right down. I hate this language, right? Because I have taught so, I, okay. I taught the first, the first child I taught how to read, I did it seven years before I became a mother. And then I taught my own children how to read, right? And this is thirty years later. Is it? No, no, no. Um, twenty years later, not thirty. Twenty, I'll say twenty-five years later. And all the children that I taught to read make the same exact mistakes with the same exact words. And I'm just like, okay, it's obviously not y'all. If every single, and these children are always like, they never meet each other. I'm never teaching them like in the same, um, at the same time. So I'm just like, you, it's at least forty, fifty of y'all, and you all made the same exact mistake with the exact same words, right? And they all write, they try to write from um right to left, right? And they all write, they try to write from, um, right to left, right? They try to write the numbers sideways. I'm just like, wow, so, my job, in order for you to be able to operate on your own land, is to get you to defy what, obviously what we were doing so long, it's been rendered instinct, right? Cause these are all our children that I was teaching to read, um. And I'm just like, and now with this last one, I'm just like, the confusion, the level of confusion, it's just amazing that we've been able to find our way back, because, um, grammar is innate. Right? That's how you can even make languages, right? And, um, I was listening to, who, who was that? Hayawatha Kameen? How he was saying, English isn't a real language, just cause um, it doesn't have its own syllabary and alphabet and all this stuff, it's all borrowed pieces and all this stuff. And I'm like, dang, this is what was forced on us, and we, we have to think with that mind. Who did this? No, no, who, who did this and why would you do something this diabolical? And who did you do it to? You couldn't, you couldn't do it to the adults, cause they were already done.
Right.
Which reminds me of a post I just came across on RT, how this Ukrainian reporter, you know, you know, save Ukraine. Come out, if he had the chance, he would kill as many Russian children as he could. Not go against the soldier, cause you a bitch, you wanna kill their children. And um, he was quoting a Nazi when he said it, because he said, um, you know, the best way to ensure the destruction of a nation is to go through the children. Because they can't grow up to continue that nation, even if they grow up, they can't continue that nation. I'm like, you need, so, okay, you got that from him, he got that from here.
Absolutely.
You know? So yeah, give it up for, the fact that we found out, we were led our way back. It's like, whoa, yeah, something going on. The spell is, is breaking now, so. Happy new full moon. Oh, don't you get stuff on the full moon? Yay, time to harvest. That's what's up. Yeah, use this energy, y'all.
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna play these messages from Mary Carmen Soy, she, she might know something about the moon.
Ground rising, everybody, Marie Carmen here, blessed to be here.
Peace.
I hope that you all are well, and this title has gotten my attention. I'm excited for tonight's moon magic, the moon magic that's been present, moon energy, um, but yeah, blessed day.
Yeah, what's up with that three, six, nine?
What was that, that Chris Brini?
Yeah, I just, I think I just got it. I'm slow.
The moon magic.
The three, six, nine? I was wondering what that was.
The uh, the code to the universe, they would say, when, when I was, when I was, um, a couple of years ago, I was re, I was reading and watching different, you know, metaphysical studies, you know, just going through the sciences, and I came across this like, uh, this astrologer, but he got into a lot of different other subjects, and, you know, he's like, wow, young dude, like, and um, he was talking about the dimensions, he made a video, like, I'm, I'm tired of people misrepresenting the dimensions. And he's like, I'm gonna just give it to y'all, like, real simple and easy, like, stop messing it up. And um, he went from zero to nine, and I was like, thank you, like, finally, you know what I'm saying, somebody took it all the way out of this scientific perspective and made it applicable, you know what I'm saying, like, right now, I can actually use this information. And like, remove the, the mysticism around Nikola Tesla discovering something, you know what I'm saying, like, not a discovery, you know, is a, is a nature, you know? And basically like, the way, the way he, they explained it, I, I read my exact notes for real. The way he explained it, or elaborated, he was saying how zero, like, is nothing. Let me get the exact notes though. It's like, zero D is nothing. Alright, zero D is space, where universal law is law. One D is where we experience isolation in space before we're, we are aware. By moving from isolation through space, we find duality, two D. By going through space, we start to learn other perspectives, not wanting to be isolated, then moving and learning the perspectives, can we take form in three D? We learn, we can be in different spaces like three D, like, oh, I could get on a train, I could walk, I could take a bus, I could ride a bike, I could change my reality, I could change my physical location with this body. Four D is us becoming the third person. When we realize slash remember that we're just energy and start to become the judge. Five D is becoming the authority. Six D is the completion of becoming the third person. When we are aware that we became the third person. And he said, that's when we really start living. I wrote, that's life. Seven D is utilizing the singular. Like, this body is the only thing that we have to look, to have to use to do everything that we came to earth to do. And using the authority, which is, like I'm saying, like, I'm gonna eat waffles and pancakes, no matter what time it is, I have the authority over this body to eat ice cream for breakfast if I want, you know what I mean? I've been doing that a lot lately. Just to, just to rebel against society, like, I'm going to eat ice cream for breakfast because everybody says not to. Um, eight D is utilizing your time. The reason why eight equals infinity, it is the, the creation of time. But then there's like, you know, chapter one, there never was a time when man was not, there was ever a time when man was not, you know what I mean, like, and that's when I was, that's what, that's what really made me think about that, because it's like eight D is utilizing time, but then that's where it's infinite, where time is infinite. And then chapter one, the creation and fall of man. Time never was when man was not. So it's like, that's the fall of man, but like, that's only, that's if you accept only being a man. Like, do you want to create your reality or not, you know? Like, men don't create their reality, like, men are kinda like stuck in conditions, you know, the conditioning of society, you know, even when it pertains to time. Nine D is utilizing the experience of going through, becoming three D, then becoming the third person. So it's like, oh, like, yeah, I did everything, you know, to become this body, this human being, and then I realized that I was more than just a human being, that I was an energy occupying this vessel. And then, I started to do stuff like, like with aliens, when we see aliens in the movies, they be like, they be eat anything. Just because they're like, they don't, they don't, they don't recognize the senses of the body, you know, or, you know, time, communications, ET, I think about like ET or Coneheads, you know, different, different, uh, you know, different alien movies, when aliens get to Earth, they like, not really, and it's not Earth that they don't understand, it's the, it's the, you know, structure that they don't understand, cause it's not natural. So, when I, when I saw this video and I took these notes, this is pretty much when three, six, and nine made, made so much more sense to me, you know, because like three D, we learn, we could be in different spaces, I don't have to be in the room that I'm in right now. Six D is the completion of becoming the third person. I am not my body, I'm an energy occupying my body. And that's what gives me the power to change my physical location, like, if I don't wanna be here, I'm leaving. Unless I get the word from the guys, like, that's, like, the, the, the carders had to come and tell me, no, chill, otherwise, you know, three D to four, five, six D, I'm like, I don't, I'm ready to do something else, I'm gonna do it. But there was, there was a, I, should I dare say, a higher authority to come to me and say, no, like, you got the authority, you, I can't still leave, but would that be beneficial to my outcome? You know, would that be, would that be healthy, you know? And then, the nine D, utilizing the experience of going through becoming three D, the body of human being, and then becoming the third person, is that, um, when they, when they say stuff like, be an observer, observe, don't absorb, you know? Where it's like, even of our, of ourselves, but also of the entire reality that we call reality. Like, to look at the news and say that, that I'm not a part of that. Or to look at social media and be like, this is, I'm not a part of this world, this entire world of social media, like, if I'm not on social media, surrounding myself with like-minded individuals, then social media doesn't exist. Like, we could delete every app off of our phone, and social media will be gone forever. Like, we could delete profiles, which they trying to make, they trying to make that a big deal, like, like, a hard thing to do. Delete a profile, you gotta send an ID, you gotta send written requests, and you gotta send emails, and you gotta verify all these different things, and you wanna delete something. But like, if we wanted to, we could just, you could throw your phone out the window, you know what I'm saying, you could break your phone and be off.
Not do it. I can't make you do it.
Right.
You know?
Right. And like, you know,
Power comes through.
Right. Ego, and like, just like, tripping, like ego tripping, you know?
Yeah.
And it's just like, you know, like I said, when I came, when I read that, you know, those notes, I was like, wow, man, three, six, nine is, okay. And right now, being that the calendar, you know, the Gregorian or whatever calendar we in, where it is March as the third month, I was like, three, 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 six, three, nine, three, twelve, three, fifteen, three, eighteen, and then I was like, oh, like, I was talking to this, to a homegirl, Empress, young Empress, and she was like, yo, but the eighteenth is a full moon. I was like, yo, like, that's not. And it's in Virgo slash Libra, I was like, yo, like, that's crazy, talk about balance, talk about days before New Year's, and then I'm on IG and I get tag day information, this is from the seventeenth to the, I was like, what is going on? Like, this is a hundred plus years old, but it's mad ancient and not, I'm like, everything, this is like what made me say, everything is everything, you know? I say it all the time, you know, we, we are the same, I say people, but it's like energy, like, we're the same that we always been. You know, whether it's a hundred years or a thousand years or five thousand years, like, you know, I know energies, different, uh, different ages, different trajectories, different origin points and different things like that. But we just saying that we always been, and like, I, I don't know, like, you know, I be meditating, and I do specific things to go back in time, you know what I mean? And try to remember, you know what I mean, and remind myself of all of my energetic experiences. And how that culminates to now, to who I am now, today. The fact that I was even capable to come to some of these realizations, you know, like, a lot of it was like, through, through conditioning, you know, through, like, to where like, I could see like, okay, being raised in these environments is the thing that really is like the hindrance, you know, it is the, the cap, you know? But then it's like, you know, everybody's different again, so it's like, well, everybody capable of this. Everybody, everybody has the capabilities, but, you know, this ain't everybody last time in this physical reality, you know what I'm saying, like, people gonna be experiencing things like this for who knows how long. And then you gets like a whole other level of study, like dimensionally, multiverse, this is not the only Earth. All, all things that can happen are happening simultaneously at the same time, when we go to sleep, we're really resting here, but we're waking up somewhere else, like, it starts to get wild, you know? And, that's why I'm like, alright, three, six, nine. Mary Carmen Soy.
Yes, there was a humble reverence when you realized, well, when I realized that I was really a co-creator in my life, right? And there was still this infinite possibility, like the ocean, right? It's so mysterious and it's just one apart, one part of nature. So imagine for Source to, to, to give you that humbling moment. Thank you so much for everything that you're sharing.
And that's the exact reaction. You just gotta laugh, like, wow.
Straight up.
Yeah, I, 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 I felt that completely and totally.
Got one more.
I really think we're people, we're all humans, and people, that means that we're all peoples of this land, right? The one thing that we all have in common, if anything, is the love for the land that has held us. So, I love that.
Absolutely. Love the land. I've been pissing people off with saying that a lot lately. God bless America. I don't know why they get so offended by that, but like, it's true. This is America, the land is America. Why wouldn't we want a lot of blessing? Cause they think United States and America is the same thing.
Yeah.
But um, yeah, man. I don't know, this been a dope chat. It's becoming up on, we coming up on ninety minutes. I like, I like, I'm about to eat some lunch in a minute, get some tea, see, it's daytime, so I'm about to eat something opposed to drinking tea. Wow, look at that, that's what changed us. Switch up the time. I wanna say, uh, peace to the, to the brozine for stopping in, peace life, Black Casper, Mary Carmen Soy, what up? Peace, uh, brother Talib Bay, thanks for stopping through. Uh, gratitude to Empress Brini for stopping through, laying down the law, you know what I'm saying, like, that's much appreciated, and I got much gratitude and much honor.
I'm just answering some stuff, cause somebody trying some stuff. Some folks always got something to say.
Yeah, that's facts.
It's like, Dan, you could've said nothing, could've just left it alone.
But um, yeah, y'all, I am, I'm gonna shut this joint down, probably when we get to the ninety minute mark.
What you got planned for birthday today?
Um, I'm chilling for a little while. Nah, I'm, I'm, busy for real, got this mala I'm doing. Nah, I ain't busy, uh, finishing this mala, um. I finished a course today, which is dope, like, just like cultivating, was cultivating.
That's what's up.
Uh, um, yeah, I'm gonna do a, I'm gonna do a room on Clubhouse at three thirty-three. Uh, Divine Science called three, six, nine Divine Science. Really the same conversation that I'm having right now. But, um, yeah, just chilling.
Yeah, I still gotta see what's up with Clubhouse. I have yet to use it.
I, I have been, um, I have been recording them, leaving the, uh, these, something called replays. They, they bit off this app to do that. Cause they, they wasn't doing it for a little while, but you know, people start coming on this app. And, and the replays was the thing, so Clubhouse added it to their app. So now replays, replays are available, it's lit too. I can, I can really appreciate the, uh, the replays on Clubhouse. The, the, the people, the people are different, you know, the, the community is different, the, you know, everything is different over there, like. And my, my replays are like off the hook. I was gonna say crazy, but they not crazy, they are off the hook though. Lot of, uh, lot of energy stuff. Lot of, uh, affirmations and, uh, meditation rooms and a lot of different conversations around energy and self-love and healing, all kinds of stuff.
You might have to check that out.
Absolutely. Let me see, got one more from Mary Carmen Soy.
I also want to shout out the sun today. I'm right under it right now. I'm currently in Mexico in my grandparents' home. And the way that the, the cosmic realm is, is just out here doing its thing. I'm also right in front of a big lagoon, a lake. So blessings on this beautiful sunny day. Blessings on tonight's full moon. The energies are indeed potent and it's been a pleasure to have come across y'all's, y'all's talk. Thank you for your, your bubble, your space in this realm.
That's dope. Yeah, thank you, Sarus. This was dope.
Gratitude.
For real.
Just, just switching it up, like I said, like, I didn't do nothing, I didn't do a chat or a talk or a room or Monday. So I was like, just looking at the dates, like what's the next best day that I could do something? Full moon told me to go in hermit mode, to be honest, uh, so I've been, I've been chilling, cultivating. But, um, everything.
I said get to work, so that's what I've been doing. He said get to work, because this is in, um, my sixth slash seventh house. Get to work.
This is my, uh, my second and third. So I was saying like, communicate, but you know, other, other, other things is like, just wait until the nineteenth, wait until the nineteenth. And I was like, all right. Uh, cycles, fifty-two day cycles, you know? So let me just chill. But I wanted to get something up for today, so. Yeah, I want to thank everybody for, for stopping through. But I'm about to get some lunch.
Ditto, I'm starving. Well, I'm not starving, I could eat.
Salud.
I just want to say, man, I appreciate y'all for using y'all powers for good, man. Peace and love, man. And please, Empress, if you don't mind, like to make a request, could you upload this? I kind of missed the most of it. Peace and love.
Do one more? I, I missed that last piece.
He, he asked if you could upload this, because he missed the last of it. But it is going to be on our, um, our profiles, brother Talib. So as soon as we end it, as soon as I end it, you're gonna be able to go to either one of our profiles and see, or hear it rather. That's facts, you know, gratitude for coming through, Prince Divine, yo, I see you, bro. Those are some dope shades. But, um, yeah, I'm starving, not starving, but I'm hungry though, so. Happy, happy lunchtime, everybody.
You gotta recognize, right? Careful, cuidado, cuidado. You know?
Nah, nah, we ain't starving.
There you go.
Good, good thing we know how to fast for forty days though.
Exactly, yo. Hey, that's coming up, we need finally discuss that too. Like should Morris participate in Ramadan? I say yes, just because it's good training.
Right.
We can discuss another time.
Absolutely. That's the subject for the next joint, fasted in, in the Morris community. That's a good one.
Yep.
All right, y'all.
All right.
Peace.